Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals here at Ashland Town Hall on the second floor, on the Select Board Hearing Room. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. The published agenda contains a link to join the meeting via Zoom and also a telephone number to join it via telephone. First order of business is to call the meeting to order. I, John Trefethan, am present.
I, Brian Forrestall, am present.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present on Zoom.
Excellent, all present accounted for. And I would also like to introduce, sitting at the table with us as always, is Jasmine Farinacci, our Director of Planning and Economic Development, and Richard Winter, Town Council. First item on the agenda is the continuance of a public hearing involving a 40B comprehensive permit request involving 10-60 Main Street. This matter commenced at a hearing on January 7th, 2025, and has continued on numerous states up to the present time. This evening, we have somewhat of an unusual presentation. And good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us today for this important hearing regarding the proposed 40B development at 10-60 Main Street. We're fortunate to have representatives from both the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, Jennifer McWeeny, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Lisa Thewat, here with us today to discuss the environmental aspects of this project, particularly regarding concerns about contamination on the site and its potential impact on future development. As part of our effort to ensure that today's discussion is thorough, productive, and focused, we previously invited residents to submit their questions and comments in advance. This gave our agency representatives the necessary time to provide thoughtful, informed responses. We appreciate everyone who took the time to submit their feedback and questions ahead of time, and we believe this approach will help ensure a more comprehensive and accurate discussion of the environmental considerations at hand. To allow for a focused and efficient exchange, we kindly ask that there be no questions or comments from the floor during the agency's responses to the questions received. Our goal is to ensure that the DEP and EPA can provide clear, uninterrupted responses to the issues raised in the submissions. We understand that there will likely be additional questions or concerns after hearing the agency's presentations. We encourage you to send those directly to the Director of Planning and Economic Development, ajfarinacci@ashlandmass.com, or scan the QR code below and ensure that they are addressed as promptly as possible. We value your engagement and feedback, and we want to make sure everyone's concerns are considered in a thorough and organized manner. Thank you for your understanding, and we look forward to hearing from our experts today. Now, I would like to turn it over to our representatives from the DEP and EPA for their response. Thank you. Jasmine has pointed out to me that we received numerous questions, and the representatives are not going to be answering each and every question submitted, but a representative sampling of the questions and the most important questions that were asked.
So Lisa and I work with the Niantz Superfund.
Could you mind, please, just stepping up so that -- to the microphone? Would it be better for them to be at the table and be on the two mics side by side, perhaps? Sure.
So we just got the questions rather last minute, and we were never asked to give a presentation, so we're not prepared to give a presentation, just to be clear. But we have read through the questions.
You can't.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Testing?
All right. We just got the list, six pages of questions, rather recently. What's no? Okay. We just got the questions today?
Yeah, myself today. I actually was on vacation for the past week.
And I got it like Friday afternoon, six pages of questions, and a lot of them are questions for the LSP, and so -- and she was away, so we don't have answers to all the questions, but thank you for the questions. We're definitely, you know, care to hear what your concerns and your questions are so we can, you know, take that into consideration. Absolutely, that's not a problem. But we were never planning to give a presentation tonight, just to set the bar here. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can kind of give like a quick, I like a quick site overview, which I kind of did last time a little bit about the --
So we worked together on the Niantz Superfund site. This is the -- she's the EPA Project Manager for the Superfund site, and I'm the state counterpart. And because the Niantz groundwater plume goes underneath this property, under approximately three quarters of it, there's potential vapor intrusion issues. So we looked at what was being proposed through that lens, not necessarily, you know, we didn't focus on other concerns that -- I have counterparts in the Northeast Regional Office, excellent colleagues, who in the future will be looking in depth at what is being proposed under this RAM, you know, the soils, how it's going to be managed, how it's going to be capped, the dust, you know, also the VI issue for the part that's not underlaid by the Niantz plume. So they will be reviewing that and looking in depth at that in the future, but not yet and not here, not here for tonight, so we can just talk about the Niantz portion.
Yeah, so basically, you know, we're here to, you know, the property itself, from a federal perspective, we don't have like a land use restrictions on this particular property, but we do have an interest because there is a plume of contaminated groundwater that has like volatile or different volatile organic compounds in the groundwater that emanates from the site, flows through downtown Ashland toward the Sudbury River. So like from our perspective, we just want to make sure that, you know, if the property's going to be redeveloped, that it's done in such a way that it mitigates any potential, like Jennifer said, the vapor intrusion risk, which is like, you know, compromising indoor air quality, because we have, the groundwater is, when it leaves the site, it's deep, you know, it's deeper into the subsurface as it nears the river, it gets closer to the surface, so there's more potential, if there are residual contaminants in the groundwater, they can sort of vaporize through any unsaturated soils and into people's, potentially like people's basements or first floors. So that's one of the reasons why there are several homes in the downtown and commercial buildings in the downtown Ashland area that have these sub-slabbed depressurization systems, including the town hall here, these vapor mitigation systems, which act very similar to radon. So, you know, it's really like long-term risks. These aren't not, these are not extremely high levels of contaminants that are causing acute effects. It's like being exposed to radon over a lifetime, you know, you just don't want that. So this particular mill property, one of my predecessors had done some indoor air testing at this property, and it didn't, you know, in the build, the condition that it's in now, as is, it's an older drafty mill building, obviously, so there were no, they did not find any indoor air quality issues with the building as it is now, but if the building were to be just no redeveloped to a more modern standard where it's more airtight, and then if you were going to add residential units, that's where we would be looking at making sure that the engineering controls and the construction design incorporated measures to mitigate that risk. And just to point out also, this property isn't just, so the property sort of has like what we would call like co-mingled contamination, so there's historical contamination from the mill operations in the soil and some of the groundwater, but then there's also co-mingled with the groundwater that flows from Niantz off of McGonco Road. So you can, so you sort of have like a combination. So the soil contamination is not Niantz related, it's more of the groundwater. So we look at it, so really what we look at is the, how does the groundwater contamination, how does it flow, and where does it flow through the property? And what we wanted to see was like, yeah, the construction design and ensuring that any design measures are done in such a way that, from a Superfund site perspective, it's, any risk related to that site is mitigated. The licensed site professional who's working on this project, he can, if he wanted to introduce himself at some point tonight, but he is the one that's looking at the property sort of as a whole, like not just the, you know, okay, we have this Niantz-related plume, but then we also have historical mill contamination, so he's also looking at the, sort of the property as a whole and working on those aspects of the, and he represents the, yeah.
The state, the state release, and so, right, right. We'll let you talk later, or now.
Well, I know one of the major questions that residents had are mainly to do with the vapor barrier. Would those be questions for you or for George Campbell, the licensed site professional?
We can both.
So a lot of these questions can be summarized to, you know, the vapor barrier, what is the life expectancy of a vapor barrier, and how many milliliters are you recommending it be for this particular site?
Originally, when, with the previous project that fell through, so not this 40B, the one before it, they were proposing 20 mil, and then I pointed out that the guidance is like 40, at least 40 to 60, and so now it is 40 that they're proposing to do. And as far as George can speak to this, but, and I think he has, but so far as I understand, when they put in vapor barriers, it's for the life of the building. It's not like they're naturally degrading within the building. That's my understanding.
And as far as the residents that are going to live there, do they have a right or is there a requirement to inform them that they are being, you know, moving into a residence that has a vapor barrier or has these, I don't want to say the word contaminants, but these concerns with the site currently?
For the most part, for the most part, that 20 to 60, it's going to be the open-air garage that's, you know, addressing, you know, the vapors that come up, and it's only the, these certain subset of that 20 to 60 where you're going to have the vapor barrier, the, is it the like utility rooms, elevator shafts, maybe a community room, I'm not even quite sure, but.
If you want to go to the microphone, please, thank you. Or you can also have a seat with.
Don't be shy.
Jennifer.
You have to push the button to make sure the green light is on.
I put it on.
Oh, yeah, that one's on, too.
I put them on.
There we go.
Okay, yeah, I'm George Campbell. I'm a licensed site professional, and I've been working on this project for several years. Just to give a little bit of background, the site, initial sampling occurred 30 years ago, so sampling has occurred on this property for many years. And the site achieved regulatory, the state site, state lead site, achieved regulatory closure approximately 15 years ago and for commercial use and not for residential use. And since that time, we've sampled soil, groundwater, soil gas, and the plan is, as Jennifer mentioned, is to have residences above an open-air garage, and, you know, my opinion is that there'll be no exposure pathway because it's above an open-air garage. Based on the soil gas data, the commercial portion of this property, even without a vapor barrier, it's safe. The soil gas was below standards set for safe occupancy, but to be protective, to be extra protective, the plan is to install a vapor barrier at that commercial space and any utility rooms also.
I think you're going to do a second round of the soil gas sampling, maybe this December?
Yes, we're also going to, we're going to, we're continuing to do assessment, both groundwater and soil gas, you know, as we progress, but just to emphasize, you know, there is a tremendous amount of data on this site.
And after the construction, is there any type of testing that continues after the site is completely constructed?
Yes, the plan is to do confirmatory testing after construction occurs.
But before occupancy for the indoor air?
That's correct.
Is it both rounds of the indoor air sampling before occupancy or just the one or?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I've had sites where they say, oh, you're going to, we'll do indoor air testing before there's occupancy, but maybe they'll just do the first round, and then they'll allow, you know, occupants to move in, and then they do the subsequent rounds to confirm. So I wasn't sure if it was you're going to do both rounds before they move in, or if you're going to do just one round, say, okay, yeah, and they can move in, and then you have a second round for confirmation.
I would say one round before occupancy, sure.
Maybe it's even possible to do two, like the winter before, like during the winter, before you even move in.
Yes.
Sorry.
Come a little closer, yeah?
Certainly, I can say confirmatory testing will be performed.
Okay.
And absolutely, we'll be working closely with Mass DEP.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And, you know, certainly their comments will be incorporated in the plan.
And that would be like, my counterparts in the Northeast Regional Office will be doing an in-depth review of the RAM plan. It's going to be modified, you know, as, right now, it's more of a conceptual plan, and there's more details to be added to it, so another, there'll be another modification to the RAM, and at that point, they would be doing an in-depth review.
So the applicant, Jeff, I apologize, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you proposed a 40-milliliter vapor barrier? Milliliter, sorry.
That's correct.
And it, DEP finds that to be sufficient?
Yeah, it's in our guidance document, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
And EPA finds it to be sufficient, too.
Excellent. And there are a few questions regarding the test pits on the site. Were there any done directly where the building is, which I think would be difficult to do since there's a building there, and also if there are high levels of TCE in the test pits?
We did in 2002, we did seven, sampled at seven locations at the site and did comprehensive testing, both with field screening, with a field instrument, and also for laboratory analysis, and none of those locations did we exceed Mass DEP standards for residential use. And I'm not saying there isn't data, past data, that exceeded, I believe there was, for metals, exceeded for metals, but that soil will be managed appropriately during the RAM process.
The lead, talking about the lead, yeah. And I think you're also proposing to cap so that the residents living there wouldn't have an opportunity to be exposed to the soil.
Absolutely.
Right. So it would either have the building on it or be asphalt paved, and DEP has a guidance document, as I was mentioning to you, as to how to construct the capping, or if there's an area where there's landscaping, there would be, I mean, you'll be working with Nero on this, but you'd have like several feet of clean fill and underneath that a geotextile. So it'd be protective, so that the people living there, they're not going to be breathing in, you know, by the, this is like what we want to ensure, they're not going to be breathing in any contaminated air, they're not going to be touching any contaminated soil, they're not going to be, certainly not going to be drinking any contaminated water from that property, because that's, they get their water elsewhere.
So that leads really well into the next question, which is, since the contaminants are air-released, how is it safe to do excavation on the site, and are there concerns for the people that will be working on the site, and do they have to have safety measures while they're during construction?
We also do have a guidance document, I think, on dust control during construction, so.
The intent is absolutely is to control dust, that it doesn't leave the site during construction, absolutely, and monitoring will occur during construction to ensure it doesn't leave the site, and health and safety measures will be utilized during construction.
Excellent, thank you. So from your professional perspective, is there, are there any dangers in placing a residential unit on this site as far as?
I've seen, we've seen it from other Superfund sites, it can be, it could be engineered to be safe.
Okay.
I, for an example, would be in Dusterplex up in Woburn.
And what's?
It was cleaned up to commercial and industrial standards, and then, of course, the cost of land, you know, the need for residential space, they went back into certain properties, a couple properties, and they, they made sure, they collected additional data, and they made sure, they engineered the design such that it would be safe for the residents living there. It can, it can be engineered, it can be accomplished.
And I know you had said you are looking for an updated RAM, more detailed RAM plan. Will that be the last submitted RAM plan for this project, if it's sufficient, or will there be additional RAMs submitted throughout the project or?
There's status reports required, so yeah, throughout the process, there'll be continually reporting to Mass DEP, and we'll be continuing to work with Mass DEP closely.
That's right.
One of the other main questions were regarding the vapor barrier, if there happens to be a flood in the area, does that impact the site in any way? Say there's a flood in the basement floods, would there be concerns about vapors being released from the waters flooding the basement or anything of that nature?
For the residential building, I don't think there is a basement, right, right.
Or first floor, it was, these are questions from residents that are summarized.
I don't think for the residential building, it would go up to the first floor where they're living.
Okay.
So, but maybe it would go into the, I don't know, you tell me, would it go into the utility rooms on that open-air garage?
I, you know, I'm going to have to defer on that to the civil engineer who, for the flood potential of the property. I get the concern, I understand the concern, I consider the residences to be likely exempt from that, just based on the height, but I understand the concern, I'm going to have to defer, I really just got the questions yesterday, and today I was in the field, so I, I'd have to defer to the engineer on that.
I remember seeing the design was to the 100-year, with 100-year flood plane in mind, which is pretty typical for construction projects.
Okay.
Give me just one more moment, just trying to make sure I didn't, there are more questions that were asked that are much more specific, that obviously you won't be able to answer this evening, but these, I'm just trying to go through the majority of the summarized questions that we had received, so a lot of these questions had the same initial comments or feel to them, even though they were individual. Does there have to be anything in the deed regarding the fact that the residents are living on a site that needed remediation?
From a federal perspective, no. I consulted with our lawyer because the, there's no federal deed restriction or activity and use limitations. You know, Georgia talked about doing, whoops, sorry, indoor air testing and, you know, soil gas testing, and as long as those results demonstrate that there is no risk, there would be no reason, yeah, like, yeah, so from the groundwater perspective, from a Superfund site perspective, if there's no vapor intrusion risk, then there would be, yeah, there would be no notification process, there's no legal requirement. You know, they're not required to do this, but, you know, we could, you know, we can produce like fact sheets about the Superfund site, like just if people, that we can give to the leasing office, we couldn't make, we couldn't force them to distribute that to people, but, you know, we've, in the past, we've given some to the town hall, I think you guys have put information about the site on your website, so that's certainly something we could do, like updated fact sheets and that kind of thing. But yeah, as far as notifications, there's really not, you can't really notify someone of a risk if there is no risk, or, you know, if there's, if they've damaged, if they've mitigated the risk through the construction process, yeah, there really wouldn't be notice. I mean, it's, you know, I get calls occasionally from, you know, real estate agents with people asking, you know, a house that has a vapor mitigation system, they might call and say, is it, you know, safe to live there? And it's like, well, we have the system in place to mitigate that risk, yeah, so similar to a house that's sitting on a very large concentration of radon, you know, you want to have a radon mitigation system because you really don't want to be inhaling that over time, you know, so it's kind of very similar to that, it's, yeah, mitigating long-term risk, yep.
And since the vapor barrier will be in place once you do the air quality inspection prior to occupancy, will there be any continued air monitoring after that point?
We'll be working with Mass DEP in regards to that question, but I think I mentioned this before, my own opinion is that the residences, you know, based on the construction, there'll be no exposure pathway. So, you know, once the testing, confirmatory testing is done, I would recommend not continuing, you know, routine air monitoring, but we'll be working with Mass DEP on that question.
Okay, excellent. For the most part, it's the open-air garage, so you're going to have that diffusion of any groundwater vapors that come up, and then there's, I mean, I don't know what percentage of the floor that is, but there's like utility rooms or elevator shafts or something like that where there's, you're going to have, I don't know if you're going to still have a community room on that, or is there no community room on that ground floor?
No.
Would there be a, no community room? Okay, so like utility rooms or elevator shafts, and they would have, it would be constructed, you know, with a permeable, hopefully permeable layer underneath it with the vapor barrier, and it would be tested, indoor air would be tested to make sure it's safe, but, so there shouldn't be a pathway from those little discreet areas up to the residences above it.
Like a utility room, you're not going to be spending, no one's going to go to the utility room for eight hours a day, you know? And we would really ensure like the commercial spaces, if there's a commercial space, like a coffee shop or a restaurant, that's where we would really want them to focus their efforts, especially on those areas, because that's where someone might be spending up to eight hours a day, because that's usually the commercial screening standards, and then residential is like a 24-hour period of time. They're actually going above and beyond, I think, in screening over a 24 period, over a 24-hour period of time, even more than is required for like commercial screening, so, yeah.
Over, you're talking 10 Main Street.
Yes, yeah, so they're actually doing a more, even a more thorough indoor air test, actually, in the commercial spaces, so.
Amazing, thank you. Considering the AUL on the site, does it conflict with the AUL to have residential?
As it is right now, so, I mean, George can answer this, but they would have to, you know, after it's constructed, he's going to go and test the indoor air, and then assuming everything's fine, then it would, you'd do a --
We would have a new AUL.
We would have to amend it.
That's, that's correct, and it would be protective. As we mentioned, there is soil contamination, there's some metals in soil, and it would be protective, that will remain capped, and there's certain areas where there will be clean fill, so there's, if there's soil exposed, that's clean soil, all that will be memorialized in an activity and use limitation.
And that would, you have to be demonstrated. And that would, you would have to be demonstrated, evaluate the risk.
Absolutely.
And be working with DEP, Nero, to confirm that everything is protective for the people that live there.
Thank you. If by chance we find that residents are becoming sick on the property, is the town or the developer, if by chance residents start to get sick on the property, again, these are not town questions, these are resident questions, but, so if by chance residents become sick on the property, and they find that somehow it is tied to the plume, is the developer or the town at risk with those findings?
I don't think that's going to happen.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be a.
You have an open air garage, so, not going to answer that, I guess. You don't have an, you don't have an exposure pathway.
Right.
So they shouldn't be getting sick from the Nianza plume.
Right, okay, I think. Are there any, are there any other government entities that are going to be involved with the review of the site besides yourselves? As far as the plume is concerned or the contaminants on site?
Like I mentioned, DEP's Northeast Regional Office.
Right.
Yeah.
And are there any emergency response plans in place if there's any further contamination discovered on the site? I'm assuming since you said you've been reviewing the site for 30 years, you have a pretty good idea of what's there, but.
Well, just about, I haven't reviewed the site for 30 years, but there's 30 years worth of sampling, you know, it's been a long time, there's been a lot of work done on the property. But, you know, we'll be, throughout the process, we'll be working with Mass DEP and, you know, closely.
Would there be any findings that, in your opinion, that would cause this project to stop? Anything on the site that you might find that would say, no, we can't? The vapor barrier wouldn't, that you might anticipate for the site?
Not that I'm aware of.
And I think, other than generally extremely technical questions that we will be able to get answers to, that we will post on the website, that summarizes the general queue of questions that we had, which we did receive over 50 questions. So a lot of these were summarized to reflect the general nature of the questions. Again, not every question was able to be answered this evening. We do hope to have questions to these answers on the website soon, after they've had more ample opportunity to look at them in depth and have more answers provided. Did the board have any questions that they would like to ask in addition to these?
Where we have limited the public from questions, I don't think it's appropriate for the board to ask questions of the panelists. I just want to point out that the ZBA has very limited response that we can make with this issue. I want to thank the developer for allowing this panel to really take place, to provide information for the residents of Ashland, to give them some assurance or explanation of what the process is going to be, if the development is approved and a comprehensive permit is granted and construction is underway, that there is still oversight by DEP and the Environmental Protection Agency on the site. So it's not just the developer and his construction crew going on. I want to thank the developer for allowing us to have this format this evening. It's very unusual for a, for a hearing, but it was, I think, important to let the people know what the process was going to be ahead. And we thank our panelists for coming in and sharing their expertise and letting us know what the process is going to be, and giving us some assurance that the appropriate environmental authorities are going to be maintaining oversight of the property and that the developer has an environmental specialist actively involved in reporting.
A licensed site professional, yeah.
Thank you, because I, I knew he was an environmental specialist and he had a big fancy title, but I'm glad you remembered it, because I didn't. But I thank you very much, and thank you very much, everybody on the panel.
One quick question, were you, for the additional questions, you weren't looking for written responses from us, but you can.
I can reach out, I think, between yourselves and George, but also I did have one more question for the three of you.
Oh, sure.
So obviously, once, if, once this project is closed before the board, people may still be interested in the reporting that goes through your office, where might they be able to find those reports on your websites if they were interested in following up with the RAMs?
The RAM reports are on, you can, if you Google Mass DEP MCP site lookup.
Searchable sites, searchable sites, yeah. And you can enter the address under searchable sites, you'll find the reports.
Okay. So I can, I can link that to the website, so that way people have access to that.
Jasmine, the only other, like, question I had, look, when I was looking through here, that seemed to be maybe somewhat repetitive, it was not really related to the Superfund site, but more related to the number of cars that were going to be there. I know that you guys are putting in like a stormwater collection system. I know people had some concerns about like contamination to the river, as far as like, you know, oil from cars or, you know, sediment, but I think you guys have some stormwater controls there.
I'm going to have to defer to the engineer on that.
Okay.
Excuse me, for the record, Jeff Engler from SLV Ashland, the developer. I'm not a civil engineer, although I try to play one on TV. So the stormwater management plan has been vetted by Hancock Engineering, who was a peer review consultant to the board, and all of the stormwater standards, you know, that are, can be achieved are being achieved, including the infiltration, the treatment and the like. I mean, so, that's kind of out of the purview, I think, of the environmental discussion, it's more of the civil engineering, but believe me, and I see a lot of new faces here tonight, that was discussed. The board would attest ad nauseam during the public hearing to make sure that that was done consistent with the, a strategy that was okay to Hancock, who represented the interests of the town.
I would disagree with the phrase ad nauseam, but it was discussed extensively.
Forgive me.
Okay. Again, thank you very much to all, we appreciate it. We appreciate the developer allowing this unusual panel discussion to take place. Normally, we're a board that hears evidence and asks questions and whatnot, but this was an area that had generated a great deal of concern in town because of the effect of the Nianza site on so many in the Ashland community.
Yeah.
And we wanted to have an opportunity to have.
Understandable, it's very understandable.
Have the process going forward explained if the development goes forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would like to make a note too, that I feel like, you know, over, over time since I've been working on the Nianza site, the town has been very, very good in the previous planning director about letting us know when there's projects that are occurring, whether they're municipal projects or private redevelopments, some, you know, within the footprint of the groundwater plume, and, you know, Jennifer and I have reviewed quite a few of those to ensure that we're comfortable with what's happening. Even actually across the street, 21 Main Street, when they tore that building down, and that previously had like a vapor mitigation system in it, when they redid that, like, we worked closely with the construction team on that to make sure that they also put in controls in that building, so that that bagel table space would be basically safe for people to occupy, so. Yeah, so I feel like, you know, the town has been very good with communicating with both of our agencies about these projects, so that we can take the time to review them.
Thank you.
Good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if there's nothing else, why don't we take a brief recess to, our panel members are more than welcome to continue and stay if they'd like, but I suspect they, they may have other things in their life they wish to do, but that's up to you. If there are people in the audience that wish to leave at this point, now would be a good time to do so while we go on to further discussion with the, with the applicant. And just as a sidebar, 55 West Union Street, the comprehensive permit was originally on the agenda erroneously, it was removed, I believe, a day or two ago. It's not going to be heard tonight, so if there's anybody here for that, we apologize for the late change in the agenda, but it's going to be on our October 14 hearing date. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks. Good evening and welcome back to the September 30th, 2025 meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. Continuing with the item on the agenda, which is the comprehensive permit request of 10-60 Main Street. Would you like to step up to the microphone, Mr. Engler? And let's see what we may be able to accomplish tonight or setting forth going forward. At the outset, I would acknowledge that we received a letter from Mr. Engler dated September 12th that was received and stamped in by the town clerk of September 18th, continuing, granting an extension of the public hearing process until October 30th, 2025, and we thank you for that. Going forward, there were, I think, a couple of items that were sort of still outstanding. One, there was going to be a schematic of the height of the building for us to look at, and I know it was in process the last time.
Is that better? Okay. So we will have that to you this week. It's taken admittedly longer, but it was important to us. And I think the board will appreciate the realism, and we flew drones, et cetera, et cetera. So those should be, I know that's been outstanding, but those should be submitted by the end of the week.
Excellent. We look forward to those. In addition, were there outstanding sign issues? That was submission that came in was all that was going to be submitted on signs?
It's my belief that we presented that and that the board was comfortable with what we had proposed.
Just wanted to check on that. And finally, landscaping? There was a landscaping plan? Any changes in that?
No, not since. We submitted, I think Jasmine would know, maybe two weeks ago, a full plan set of rec, what we call the plan set of record, which is, was a full engineering plan and the full architectural plan. And that encompasses all of the things that have been asked of us throughout the course of the public hearing. As counsel would attest, you know, there's been a lot of information submitted and exchanged and whatnot, and it's confusing to the building inspector and others later, well, what's the plan? These are the official plan sets of record. So I would put it to the board. The landscaping plan in that engineering plan is the plan and reflective of everything we've talked about over the course of the public hearing.
Fine. Our next scheduled meeting is October 14th. We would like to start dealing with your waiver requests at that time. I looked through the submissions, and I didn't readily see a final request for waivers. Could you point that out to us where it is? Or submit, submit it now so we can deal with it on the 14th?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to interrupt. Yeah, it was definitely submitted, but we'll re-sub, it'll be the same thing. But just so everybody's clear, this is the waiver list. I think it was counsel, it may have been Jasmine, had identified a waiver I think we might have missed, and we added one at that time. Or it was a clarification. I forget, this is going back probably two months. But regardless, Mr. Chairman, tomorrow I can submit what would we, what we would consider to be the definitive and current waiver list.
That would be helpful, just so there's no misunderstanding when we start on the 14th, we can go down that, go down that list.
No, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I mentioned is that, I think, is, Mr. Engler knows, we started a draft decision that we've been working up. And so I don't know if it'll be ready to start sharing on the 14th, but we're making progress in that direction. Just wanted to provide that update.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Then if there's nothing else to take up at tonight's meeting, Chair will entertain a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, October 14th at 7:05 PM.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I can do.
Aye, John Trefethan vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forstall vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Segal vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan vote in favor.
Thank you, everybody, and this matter is continued until October 14th. Thank you, Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a variance request for Zero Myrtle Street. Would anyone who is here for that matter come step forward? I'm guessing you're an attorney.
I am.
Because no one else wears a coat and tie.
I don't blame them.
Well, except our next applicant, who is always finely dressed, I must confess. Okay. Let me read the notice into the record, please. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will open the public hearing to hear the petition from Farouk Ansari requesting a variance per Chapter 40A, Section 10 of the Massachusetts zoning act and Chapter 282, Section 3.3, parentheses, nonconforming uses and structures, and 9.2, Board of Appeals of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant seeks a variance to create driveway access from West Mountain Street, West Mountain Lane, excuse me, rather than Myrtle Street, where the lot has its frontage due to the topography of the lot. The lot is currently undeveloped. The property in question is located at Zero Myrtle Street, Assessors Map 9, Lot 38, in the Residential A, R.A. zoning district. And would you please step to the mic and identify yourself, please?
Thank you, Chair. My name is George Bonon. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Farouk Ansari. And as you had stated, we're here seeking a frontage variance approval for Zero Myrtle Street, which is what it's informally known as.
Let me just stop you there, if I may.
Sure.
Just to explain to everybody what our process is going to be. We'll have a presentation by the applicant. Board members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. We will then open the matter for a public comment or questions from members of the public. And we may then close the hearing or continue the hearing, depending upon what transpires. I do have just one preliminary question before we start, and that's just so we know the cast of characters. In the application that was filed with the ZBA, the current property owner was listed as J.I.W. Partners LLC, and the applicant is Farouk Ansari. And the box checked off is prospective purchaser/tenant. So I guess my question is, is Mr. Ansari own the lot? Or is he just, does he have a PNS for the lot? I don't quite know who's who.
Yes, Mr. Ansari has a PNS for the lot. He is under agreement with the current property owner to purchase it.
Okay, thank you. And again, just as a reminder to the board members, with the variance and what we're seeking, what the applicant is seeking and what rights we have and what we have to decide under Section 10 of the state statutes, we have the right to grant a variance where such permit granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance of bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance of bylaw. And after all of that, finally, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair. And I just handed to the zoning board members an exhibit from MassMapper depicting the topography of the land. And I have about four more copies, so I invite anyone who'd like to see it to come up and grab one. But I'll start with that exactly, the topography. What you're seeing here and what Zero Myrtle Street is, is it's roughly 113,000 square foot lot, undeveloped. It has, it's a forested area, and it has its frontage. It's a buildable lot, and it has its frontage from Myrtle Street. It's 150 feet long. It spans across several backyards to the west, but to the east, for about 50 feet, it has frontage, not legal frontage, but it fronts West Mountain Lane, which is a cul-de-sac. The developer proposes to build a single-family home in the northwest portion of the lot. The hardship he would entail is if he were to create a driveway from his legal frontage on Myrtle Street, it would have to go through about 50 feet of elevation. As you can see on MassMapper, the elevation at the front of Myrtle Street, where the frontage begins, is about 246 feet. And in the northwest portion of the lot, it gets to about 301, around 300. So it would increase about 50 feet in elevation, which is a significant sum. It would also have to travel the length of that entire lot, which is, the entire lot's length is about 757 feet. So I would say it would probably have to travel around 600 feet. So it is quite an undertaking to create a driveway at the front of Myrtle Street and bring it to where the developer proposes his house, where he builds the house in the northwest portion of the lot. In addition to that, I also cite that at the beginning of Myrtle Street, you'll notice a rocky, steep topograph, sorry, soil. And he would have to go through significant excavation and clear cutting of several trees to make way for his proposed driveway, or driveway from Myrtle Street, rather. Creating a driveway from West Mountain Lane eliminates several things. One, the hardship he has regarding the topography. The West Mountain Lane frontage basically is about the same level. It's about 300 feet as what the proposed house would be at. Also, he would avoid clear cutting several trees because he wouldn't be coming from Myrtle Street anymore. One moment. And lastly, I'll just point to the, any detriment, any public detriment there would be. And I don't see anything, to be honest with you. I have, we, I received today a few emails from two abutters basically citing two issues, and that's a fire hydrant on West Mountain Lane that if you've taken a look at the area or have Google mapped it, you can see that the fire hydrant is a little off to the side, and we can easily build a driveway around it. The second thing would be traffic concerns. And although I'm very sensitive to that, we're proposing a single-family house here, not multiple townhouses. The traffic will be de minimis. And with that, I think I'll turn to the board.
Okay. Brian, questions?
Yes. What is the plan for the remainder of the lot that doesn't have to be clear cut if we don't need a driveway?
There's no plan for it. It'll remain undeveloped.
And it's just going to be a single-family home? It's not going to be a duplex or anything?
That's correct. Single-family home to match the character of the West Mountain Lane neighborhood.
Okay.
Those are my questions for now.
Thank you.
Stu, do you have questions?
Yes. I visited the site, and there's a challenge even to have an entrance at the West, West Mountain Lane portion. There's a lot of construction that would have to be done there. I don't know, it seems to me it is of equal effort. That slope is very steep at the, at that northwestern portion of the site. And I don't know what you're gaining from this. I also think that positioning the house more towards Myrtle Street would be a better solution to your problem. And it definitely has an impact on the residents of West Mountain Lane, considering the fact that the person who bought this land bought it, and it had always been associated with Myrtle Street. So I'm not, I'm not inclined to agree with your assessment, Counselor.
Thank you. Would you like me to rebut one at a time or hear out the board members first?
And? Yeah, why don't we each have an opportunity to ask questions, and then he can respond as a, as a group? Brian, do you have questions?
I do, yes. Thank you. So my, my primary question is, as I, as I view the required findings, it's not just that there's some hardship that is, you know, in developing this land and that the variance would relieve, but also that it is unique to this particular property. And what I'm, what I'm hearing on that is that there's approximately 50 feet of elevation change if you're coming from the Mountain, Mountain View Lane, and a span of, I guess, about 600 feet that's going to have to be cut to make a driveway. How is that unique as it relates to, you know, the topography in that zoning district as a general matter? And that's really the only question I have.
I think all of my questions have been asked by other members, with one exception. Where on the Zero Myrtle Street lot is the house proposed to be built? Can you mark it by designation?
If you'd like, I can depict it by drawing it on an exhibit I have and providing it to you, but it would be in the northwest portion of the lot, basically between the, like, basically on the 301 contour line.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. And how wide is the proposed driveway on West Mountain?
There haven't been any architectural or engineering drawings done yet because depending on whether this variance is granted is going to dictate how the house is oriented and how long the driveway would be. But I would imagine the driver would comply with Ashland zoning bylaw driveway standards.
And how wide is West Mountain Street at the spot where it intersects the Zero Myrtle Street?
We haven't had a survey done, but using MassMapper as a resource, it stems a little larger than 50 feet. So I think it's around 52, 53 feet.
Thank you. Okay, I have nothing further, so if you want to.
Sure.
Spawn?
I'll, I apologize, I don't know the last names of the board members, but.
That's fine.
Stu. Stu had brought up that he doesn't see, or he, he can't differentiate the challenge between creating a driveway from Myrtle Street as opposed to West Mountain Lane. With all due respect, there is a significant increase in topography from Myrtle Street to the West Mountain Lane contour, which is at 301. And at West Mountain Lane, you'll remain on the same contour line, basically. The house will be built on the same contour line that, that the elevation is at West Mountain Lane, and that's 301. If you were to bring it, if the driver was to be constructed at the Myrtle Street frontage, that's over 50 feet of elevation. There is a difference, and there is a substantial hardship. hardship there. I understand that it's steep, but with minimal grading or minimal fill, you'll be able to create driveway with much more ease than you would at the frontage of Myrtle Street. And I would also argue, another point that Stu had brought up was, why don't you position your house closer to Myrtle Street? Well, that's a hardship too in and of itself. It, it prohibits the applicant from placing the house on the lot where he'd like to. It's within the zoning bounds, it would, it would meet all zoning standards, aside from the frontage that I'm asking for today. And the last thing I think he had mentioned that, was that the lot has always been associated with Myrtle Street. You know, with all due respect to Board Member Stu, it's a large lot that stems the length of 757 feet. The front, it may be associated with Myrtle Street because that's where the legal frontage has always come from, but with the proposed location of the single-family home, it makes much more sense that the driveway comes from West Mountain Lane. And Brian, you had asked what, what's unique, because one of the standards is the topography has to be unique to this property. Well, it in fact is. The topography on this lot stems over 50 feet, actually over 60 feet at places, but for all relevant areas, it's, it increases in elevation by 50 feet. You don't see that on abutting lots, as they're much smaller and they've all been developed in other ways. This, this topography is very unique to this property. And I think that, that had answered, or I had rebutted the questions that were put in front of me.
Not really. In your presentation, you just admitted that the builder or the owner wants to put a house in. We don't know what the house will look like. There are no plans submitted that we can look at in terms of how the house is going to be designed, constructed, nor do we have an actual location for the house. So I would recommend to our, to the board that we postpone this decision until we have more definitive information about this proposed building of this home.
If I may, I'm sorry, it's usually premature to provide engineering and architectural plans at this stage when you don't know where the house is coming from. Of course, the building department will have its opportunity to review during a building permit process. I can tell you right now, the, the plan is to put forth a single-family home that complies with all, all Ashland zoning bylaw.
You know, with respect to the topography being different than surrounding properties and following up on what Brian asked, if you look at the properties next on Myrtle Street, they slope up, and if you go under the 12 West Mountain Street, they continue to slope up until you get to West Mountain Street. So there's nothing that strikes me as being typically unique to Myrtle Street, it's just that the lot goes all the way back and not sort of cut in half as the lots on Myrtle Street are, backing up to 12 West Mountain, Nate West Mountain Lane.
Well, that in and of itself is, is unique, Chair. The other lots are of smaller size and, and they elevate no more than 20 feet. You have here a 50-foot elevation from the proposed entrance to the proposed location of the single-family house. The length of the lot in and of itself is unique compared to the other lots around of it, around it. The topography is a 50, it's, it's 50 feet. And the difference of 50 feet in elevation.
Ryan's got his.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ryan, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up on that last response. So obviously, yes, that, you know, I understand that the, the distance is greater here because of the size of the lot. But what, what I think ties into Stu's question is, you know, it's the choice as to where the property, where the, the structure is going to be located that is creating that 50, that's, that large span, the 600-foot span, correct? It's not, it's not the, you know, if there was a, there are other buildable areas within the lot that would not necessarily have that same, that same challenge. Is that correct, or is it?
Well, yeah, you make, you make a great point, but I'd like to point to the denial letter from the building commissioner who, who cites that the entrance to Myrtle Street has a rocky topography. So the soil, which is also one of the elements that can be, that a variance can be approved from soil, the building commissioner of Ashland admits that there's a rocky topography, a rocky, I'm sorry, yes, rocky, rocky topography and a steep slope. So it's not just the topography, but it's also the soil, too. But the, the, the builder here, the applicant, has a choice to where to put, you know, where to put his house as long as it's, as long as it's zoning compliant. You know, he chooses to put it in the northwest corner away from a butters and in a main street. And given its location of where he chooses to, where he chooses to put the house, he should be able to benefit from a variance where the topography hardship is met.
I mean, obviously, the, the quality of the soils, I, I don't, you know, the fact that that's mentioned by, in the denial letter, you know, to me, doesn't, doesn't mean that that's unique to this property as opposed to the, the abutting properties in the surrounding area. I mean, this is Mountain View Drive for, for a reason. You know, it's a, it's a certainly rocky area with a lot of elevation. But thank you for, for that response.
Any further questions from the board before we open it up for public comment? Stu, you all set?
Yeah, until I hear more.
Okay, and Brian, you all set?
I am, yes, thank you.
Okay. Yes, Brian, you have a comment?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I did walk the property today. If I owned that property and was going to build a house, I would build it where these guys want to build it. It's a, it's a better spot. I wouldn't want a hill that size behind my house on my own property if I could avoid it. So I totally understand why they want to do that, why they want to make a shorter driveway and build their house up on the top of the hill rather than down on the slopes so it's easier to get to Myrtle Street. And personally, you know, I walked West Mountain and Myrtle Street, and in my opinion, Myrtle Street doesn't need a driveway on it, doesn't need another driveway on it right across from that, whatever road that is right there. That's just my opinion. So I, I think the plan's a pretty good idea.
Okay, why don't we open it up for public comment then? If there's anybody in the room that wishes to be heard, if you please come step up to the mic. We also did receive two emails this afternoon from members of the public, and those will be read into the record after people talk in person.
Hi there, good evening. I might be one of the emails, I wasn't sure if I would make it in time.
One of them said they were going to be late.
Yes, Catherine Cox Arslan, I'm a resident at 15 Blueberry Hill Lane.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Catherine Cox Arslan.
That wasn't one of the emails I got.
Okay, it probably was like an hour before the hearing, so maybe 6:00 PM.
Oh, then they have not received that.
We haven't seen her.
Okay, apologies.
Read us your email or give us your public comments.
Sure, so, hi, everybody. As I said, resident of 15 Blueberry Hill Lane, so I live very close to the top of the hill that we're talking about today. We, I have a couple of comments in the email, and I'll just read through the pertinent highlights here, some of which has already been discussed. One is that the topography of this lot and people, some people have been to the site, some people have not, is heavily forested and challenging for construction in almost all locations with the flattest and most accessible portion of the lot being near a zero Myrtle Street and the most elevated portion being adjacent to West Mountain Lane. I think no matter where you want to place the house on that lot, I think there should be full recognition that there would be significant grading, potentially even blasting, in order to construct a home on that property. And so I'm here at the hearing because I wanted to understand more how the applicant was justifying undue hardship, warranting the change from zero Myrtle to West Mountain Lane, and whether there were any building plans, site evaluations, or site work that has been done already to justify that position. I understand that we're not here to talk about the location of the home specifically, but it is pertinent as to, you know, where, the driveway and how the home is going to be accessible and where it's going to be located. And, you know, we live almost at the top of the hill, this potential property, we, at the top, most top point of the hill, and so it's very rocky there. I did send some pictures with the email, so you can see that vantage point from the street of Blueberry Hill Lane, the top of my driveway, and up towards the hill, and you can see that it's all rock, and then you can see the forest behind that as well. I also wanted to make a comment that, you know, the applicant makes reference to the development of a single residential home on the property, on the northwestern portion of the property, but, you know, as mentioned today, there was no indication of where that might be relative to the documents in the variance being sought, I just mentioned that. And I also was curious about what setbacks could be maintained based on that topography and the location of the home. Again, I now understand that we're not here to talk about that, but I think where, how the home can fit in that area is of importance to me. I live, as I said, at the bottom of the, of this hill. We have a rock wall, they blasted to construct our home, which has more than 50 feet of elevation. And our driveway and our home is at the bottom of a rock hill, essentially, and some of that is still debris from the blasting that occurred when our home was constructed.
What was your address again?
15 Blueberry Hill.
15, okay, thank you.
I think we have the highest elevation, I think we can win that award for that surrounding area. I'd also like, I wanted to confirm that this is a lot zone for a single residential home. One of the concerns that I had when I saw this notice was that the driveway location would enable more homes to be built on the property versus just one. I, I think what I heard today is that this is just a single residential home, which is comforting, but I just want to make sure that this isn't a variance with a slippery slope, because obviously there are other constructible areas of the property. I still would say that zero Myrtle, that area of the property is still constructible even if the variance is granted, and so I have a concern that there are more properties that would be coming behind in that region. And then, you know, lastly, again, this is my first time doing this, but I'm throwing the kitchen sink at my comments. You know, as you can see in the pictures that I've sent and that will be shared, there's a forested buffer between my home and this lot. This forested area is at the top of a hill. I believe it's historically been called Fish Hill according to old maps that I've seen of the town of Ashland. This area can be seen from multiple roads and Mill Pond Park, so just not, just not necessarily my neighborhood, but other neighborhoods in the area, including, you know, downtown Ashland even. And it provides privacy to multiple homes adjacent to the lot and is very active with wildlife. So I did want to understand from the applicant how privacy would be maintained for the surrounding homes and whether we can expect a clear cutting of the entire lot to accommodate the proposed property. So as I said, I sent some pictures, you can see from that vantage point the level of the amount of trees that are there, the steep incline, the rocky terrain, and the forested area that I'm referencing in my comments. And then I know, I would appreciate just understanding where the property is proposed to be located relative to the plan that you shared, because that was absent and I, so I don't know what to infer from that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We normally will take the next person lined up, if you could. I know, but we're going to take him, because he's here. He's been waiting kindly, hi, Mr. Small.
Thank you. Doug Small, DPW Director. Just as far as a safety standpoint, standpoint view on this is, I would prefer a driveway, a new driveway on West Mountain Street as opposed to a new driveway on Myrtle Street. Just Myrtle Street, we have lots of issues out there, and obviously with this 10 to 60, if, if there's, if there's a better option to make things safer, then I would steer away from Myrtle Street, sidewalks and the snow and ice and speeding vehicles and walls that get hit, there's, there are lots of issues on Myrtle Street. That's all I have to say, I can't comment what she just.
Thank you. We have someone online that wishes to be heard, I believe, Jasmine?
Yes, if iPhone 3 can please list your name and address for the record.
Hi, sorry about that. My name is Heather Riva and I live at 9 West Mountain Lane, and I think I sent an email because I wasn't sure I'd be able to make it onto the call. So I don't know if you want me to continue or just go by.
We do have the email and we were going to read it into the record, but if you wish to read it into the record, that will.
Um, you know.
Doing that, but it has been entered into the record. If you want to comment as well, that's fine, and we just won't read the email into the record.
I'll go ahead and, I, I can go ahead and read it if you give me two seconds. And then I also have, I think, one additional comment, just based on what I've heard so far. So my email is, "Good afternoon, my husband and I own 9 West Mountain Lane. We strongly oppose the proposed variance requesting access to the applicant's property via a driveway at the end of West Mountain Lane. The applicant is citing hardship due to topography of the lot as the reasoning for not wanting a driveway with access via Myrtle Street as the zoning ordinance requires. If the applicant had done their due diligence in purchasing this lot and knowing that the frontage was located on Myrtle Street, then they knew this was a potential issue for them based on what I'm hearing, where they want to place the house. The residents of West Mountain Lane should not be impacted by additional vehicle traffic." And I'll just jump in here where I don't know, the gentleman, who's the attorney's name, said that they're, you know, it's a small cul-de-sac, it's not a lot of vehicle traffic because of a single-family home. My question on that is, what, what about when you're constructing the home? And what about when you're filling in and bringing in? So the residents of West Mountain Lane will most definitely be affected by that and impacted. And then it appears, so my other, the other question, which I think was answered, is, so the property is owned by a developer and there's a purchase and sale agreement in place, it sounds like, so is the, is the sale to this person contingent upon a driveway on West Mountain Lane? It just, if I'm being completely frank, if you buy a piece of land and you know the topography of that land and where the frontage is, you, you, you have to sort of expect that that's where your driveway is going to be. Secondly, the uniqueness of the topography itself, the, the previous resident from Blueberry Hill made a great point about blasting, all of our.
We lost you, if you can.
I thi-, I think you've muted yourself. Heather, we can't hear you. Oh, and she's gone. And she's not on anymore, yeah, she's gone, she must have.
Well, we've entered her email into the record, so she's had adequate opportunity to have her position heard. I will read into the record the second email that we received, actually, it was the first one received at 11:19 this morning. "Hi, my name is Carolyn Beaton and I live at 8 West Mountain Lane. Because of a prior commitment, I won't be able to attend the meeting tonight. I would like to express my concern over your committee allowing this variance to go through. West Mountain Lane for a cul-de-sac is rather busy. Many people just drive up, parentheses, as I have always thought they were looking for a way to avoid downtown, close, parenthesis, and a speed, underlined. Adding more cars slash delivery vehicles, et cetera, is putting more traffic on a small road, a road that has children playing on it, a road that has a great deal of." road, a road that has children playing on it, a road that has a great deal of wildlife on it due to the budding town forest, a street where almost every house has a dog, and they are out walking. There is also a fire hydrant right at the end of the cul-de-sac, and I would be interested to know how this would affect the driveway. I hope you and the committee not to allow this to happen, or I urge you and the committee not to allow this to happen. Thank you, Carolyn Beaton, 8 West Mountain Lane." I believe that concludes public comment. We do have the email that the first acumen sent to us with some photos. That'll be part of our record?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That will be admitted as part of the record.
Is there a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Okay, let's...
Am I included in that? May I also make a comment before you close public comment?
Well...
I guess, am I included in the public? I'm staff.
You're a sort of professional comment, and not public comment.
Yeah, okay, I'll take it. I just wanted to make a few points of clarification about a variance, based on the comments received by the residents and some by the board. So, a variance is only based on three things, which is the shape, size, and topography of the lot, and that requiring a strict enforcement of the bylaw would create a hardship for the applicant, financial or otherwise. This is a residential lot, we may not restrict under any circumstances construction of a single-family home regardless of blasting, or traffic. This is a variance, so none of the site plan questions that were asked, such as traffic, land clearing, sightlines, any of those issues can be taken into consideration on this application that's not before you. The only thing that is before you right now is access to this lot. You do not need to, you cannot necessarily require to know the location of the house to make this determination. The determination is whether or not the access from Myrtle Street or West Mountain Lane is adequate. If Myrtle Street is going to be a detriment to the applicant, if the literal enforcement of the bylaw is taken, and if West Mountain Lane would be able to afford a reasonable alternative access for the house. So, we, we cannot ask for house plans or architectural renderings, we cannot reserve the site, the site for scenic value, or, or deny this based on anything else, other than we find that the variance is unreasonable, that there is competent, adequate access from Myrtle Street, and it will not inhibit the property. The applicant is allowed to request a variance for anything, and if this is approved, if they would like to come forward with a building application, at that time, then setbacks in those things would be revised at that point. But I would just encourage to keep your thoughts on the variance in front of you specifically.
Do we want to enter into deliberations, or do we want to continue the hearing until the next date of October 14th, to give it further consideration? What would the board like to do? Brian?
I know what I want to do.
Okay, why don't we discuss the matter? Three voting members on this, the two full members, Brian and myself vote, and one of our alternate members will vote. We generally rotate, and the three hearing decisions that we are going to be reviewing later tonight. They go Stu, Ryan, and Stu. So, Ryan, you would be next up and on the rotation, if you wish to sit on this.
I will sit on this, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, what, what are your thoughts?
I would grant the variance.
Brian, your thoughts?
I'm, I'm still a little bit confused about the standard based on the summary Jasmine just gave, because I, you know, I'm looking at MGL 40A, Section 10, and I, I keep getting stuck on the shape or topography of such land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. If, if, if that's not a measure, then I'm certainly in favor of, of this variance. It's clear that it's the most efficient way that this can be built, and that the cost to go ahead and develop this property with the entrance coming from Myrtle Street will be significantly greater, and there'll be much more disruption to, to the land. But that, that's the, that's, that's really where I'm getting stuck, is whether we have to compare this to the rest of the, the area within the zoning district, where there's clearly been tons of blasting, tons of grading work to be done to develop the other areas surrounding it previously, and those investments were made by those developers that developed that area. So, I'm, that's where I'm getting stuck, right? I don't know if, if we can get clarification possibly from Town Council on, on, on that particular standard, or if that's something we just need to go based on our interpretation statute.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and Council, if you'd like to correct?
Sorry?
If I may respond, and if Council would like to correct? So, variances are, are site-specific, so you need to look at them as each site, and not as part of the neighborhood as a whole, so that the intent of the variance is to look at each site and its unique conflicts, because it doesn't conform to the zoning in the areas, why they're requesting that relief. So, it, it is pretty critical to look at it as it sits on its own, instead of as a whole in the neighborhood, other than when you're looking at the detriment. But again, a single-family home, regardless of which side you're building from, if you have to perform blasting to build that single-family home, we cannot deny a variance based on that, if that's what it takes to build the home, that wouldn't be considered a detriment to the neighborhood, that would just, while it is, it is, but under the law, that wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to prevent that construction from happening, based on that requirement. Does that clarify that at all, Ryan?
No.
Sorry.
The, the question is not whether, as I'm reading the statute, the question is not whether we could prohibit the construction based on the activities that would be necessary to construct, but to grant the variance, my view of this in reading the statute is, I have to make a finding that this prod, this specific property is unique in its topography from those surrounding it. So, there needs to be some comparison there, and that's, that's where I'm getting hung up.
It's unique in its nature that it doesn't conform naturally to the bylaw, that a strict conformance to the bylaw would render this site unusable. So, you're looking at it in conformance to a bylaw standard, instead of adjacent properties, if that makes any sense, if you were to strictly apply the bylaw and have them access it from Myrtle Street, would that cause more of a hardship than granting the variance to access it from West Mountain Lane?
I think Town Council wishes to be heard at this point, so why don't we allow that?
So, sorry to jump in late here, and I'm not trying to break a tie or anything, but let me just chime in, kind of with my own two cents on it. So, there, there's two competing factors here. As you've heard, there needs to be a finding related to, you know, shape, soil, topography, and the uniqueness of some sort of, you know, hardship, financial or otherwise, with respect to this lot, with respect to those one of, or more of those three characteristics. Now, while you're weighing that, and, and deciding whether or not there is one of those factors that affects this lot uniquely, then you also have to weigh the competing factor, which is what we call a self-created hardship, which is, you know, is this hardship that's being argued to the board something that was otherwise avoidable, or could be avoidable just by, you know, developing the land in a different way, and so on and so forth? And so, I, I hear your question, Ryan, sort of getting to that a little bit more, in that when you do go through the findings that you have to make, and that is one of them, you quoted the statute correctly, you're, you're going to have to decide, you know, is this unique hardship that's being argued to us meeting one of those three criteria? And if so, is it something that the applicant has, you know, self-imposed, if you will, by, by proposing to develop the land in this way? Is it avoidable, in other words? So, but for the variance, would this lot still be developable? Yes or no, right? And so, I think I heard the answer is probably yes, it's just that that, that way is not particularly desirable for the applicant, for all the reasons you heard tonight. So, let me just recap briefly, because we're getting like really deep in the weeds here, I think, right? You're going to have to make several findings. You just quoted one of them. So, you're going to have to make a finding whether or not there's a hardship owing to the shape. Size is not shape, shape is shape, right? Soil or topography. So, if you can make a finding that there is a hardship owing to one of, one or more of those three things, then you're past the first threshold. Second one is, you know, is that shape, is that soil, is that topographical hardship unique to this lot? Is it a unique challenge to this lot? You're going to have to make that finding. And so, then the last one is it self-created? And if, and if you can pass those three thresholds, then you've met the legal criteria for granting a variance. You never have to grant a variance, it's always discretionary, and there's a joke, obviously, in the business, that, you know, there's no such thing as a variance, right? Because they're supposed to be very sparingly granted. So, you weigh all that with what you've heard tonight, and it's the board's determination as to whether or not those thresholds have been met. It's, it's not like there's, there's any particular quantum, you know, that has to be reached, right? Well, there's a topographical issue, but only 1%, and we, we're not going to make a finding unless it's really extreme. No, it doesn't have to be that kind of metric-based finding, it's just if you find that there's a hardship owing to topography, that's enough. You know, it doesn't have to be 1%, 99%, or somewhere in between, right? And so, if it's the shape, or if it's the soil conditions, you can make a finding on any of those, as long as you find that the hardship is related to that in some form or fashion, and it's within your discretion to not, to decide if that's sufficient. If you feel that that's not enough of a hardship, or it's not really a hardship, because maybe it's self-created, or there's some other, you know, reason for it, well then, then that wouldn't justify a finding. So, that's for this board to decide.
Oh, I have, I guess I have a question with, with that analysis. Given the fact that on Myrtle Street, there's adequate frontage to build a driveway, is the fact that the applicant would prefer to have the driveway off West Mountain Street, as opposed to building what by right he could build, is that creating a hardship such that he's created the hardship, and not by wanting to have a driveway at a more preferable for him location than what legally he could do by right?
So, may I respond?
By all means, please.
And, keep in mind, I'm representing the board and not the applicant here.
Correct.
And so, I'm not going to answer the question on behalf of the applicant, but I think the applicant attempted to answer that question, which is there's, there are reasons why they don't want to come in off of Myrtle Street, and those reasons create hardships for them. And so, I believe, and, you know, you only closed public comment, correct?
Correct.
And so, the applicant can still respond to that question, and I think you should invite the applicant to respond to that question. But I believe I heard the applicant state his argument that it's not self-created, because there are hardships, you know, owing to the three criteria, that would occur if he had to come off of Myrtle Street. And so, you may want to invite the applicant to respond directly to that, I don't want to paraphrase or put words in his mouth, but I think you did hear a response to that
Okay. Advocate, do you want to respond?
Thank you, there have been actually a couple of reasons why, also described by, I'm sorry, it was the DPW Director? Coming off Myrtle Street is also a safety issue, which I had written into my application. It's a main street, which causes possible issues, especially the area of Myrtle Street, where our frontage is located, there's a little bit of a curvature, which would create a lot of dangerous ingress and egress situations if there was a driveway there. There's also a utility pole, which I had not mentioned before, and as the DPW Director had stated, there's also significant curbing there, which would, which would require a lot of demolition, and there'd be a lot of blasting, and I think what Attorney Winner was referencing, or was trying to say that I had said, was the rocky topo, the rocky soil at the beginning of Myrtle Street is a significant issue, not just cited by me, but by the building commissioner himself. And for those reasons, coming off of Myrtle Street would not be, it would be less than ideal, it would, it would create an undue hardship for us to do. And before I go back to my seat, I'd also like to say one thing. It's not just the topography, but it's the length in topography, which creates the uniqueness. It's 50 feet over, it's 50 feet in elevation over about 500 or 600 feet in length. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I guess I haven't said my opinion about what, whether I would wish to grant it or not, and frankly, I have been on the, on the edge on this, listening to the various arguments and legal analyses, et cetera. But I think that given the shape and the topography of the land, it would meet the requirements for a variance. It would seem there would be substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to make a driveway off of Myrtle Street, up the elevation into the, into the back end of the lot, or even into the middle of the lot. And the, Mr. Small's suggestion on safety, although perhaps not technically one of the reasons to, to grant a variance, I think is a practical matter, speaks to having a driveway off of West Mountain Street. So, I, I would be inclined at this point to grant the variance. Brian, your thoughts?
I'm done.
Okay, Ryan, your thoughts?
I'm likewise inclined to grant the variance, I'm, I'm better informed as it relates to the distance that has to be cleared out for the, to grade coming from Myrtle Street, and certainly the safety issue is, is one to consider for the better good, so I would vote in favor.
Okay. That being said, Jasmine, do you have enough to draft a decision granting the variance?
I do.
As we usually do, and we will close the public hearing tonight, and then consider the draft decision at our next meeting on October 16th.
14th.
14th.
Sorry.
It's been a long evening, folks, sorry about that.
I believe it's 14.
It is 14.
14, it is a 14th, no, I know, absolutely, I've got it written down on my paper here. Okay, motion to continue the hearing to October 14th at 7:05 PM?
So moved.
Aye, John Drefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Okay, moving on to the last hearing on our agenda, last but not least. Oh, there are other items on the agenda, just not other hearings.
You may stay for those, if you'd like.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the continued public hearing for the comprehensive permit application for 61 Waverly Street, a project known as the residences at Ashland Crossing. And we have the applicant's repres- And we have the applicant's representative here before us this evening. I would note for the record that the planning department, or actually, I received a letter dated September 26th from the Gutierrez Company, signed by Israel Lopez, continuing the extension of time for review from September 30th tonight. The applicant consents to a second extension to October 14th, 2025. And we thank you for that. That being said, you want to step up to the microphone? And we can talk about some things that we need to, we need to go over tonight. Just looking up to see who was present on the screen because I think the first issue I want to take up is the question about the water and sewer issue that has been going back and forth between our peer reviewer at Haley Ward and you and your engineer. And just where we stand with that. There was a final email that we received from Bethany Ordung, the Vice President, Regional Manager of Haley Ward, our peer reviewer on this subject, summarizing what's been agreed upon and what remains outstanding. So perhaps it would be best to start with you, sir, about what has been agreed upon by Gutierrez to do with respect to that.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Israel Lopez for the Gutierrez Company on behalf of the applicant, just for the record.
I'm sorry if I butchered your name.
No, that's okay. No, you didn't at all. So I had, at the last hearing, committed to the board that we would go back and work with Haley Ward to come up with a proposal that was acceptable to address the town's concerns that we provide an investigation of the sewer line from our property to the pump station. And so we've had a couple of conversations. I initially provided a scope of work addressing that investigation requirement. And then subsequent to that, we had some more dialogue with Haley Ward about some of the kind of details about the study in terms of what constitutes a significant rain event and the timing of that. I think those were the primary components of that. And I think we've pretty much come to, I think, an agreement on most of that. I did, I didn't receive the letter. It wasn't sent to me, but I did notice that it was posted on the website before arriving here. So we did have a chance to look at the letter and read through that. And I do have our engineer on the phone, Will Park from SMMA, whom has been involved in this process and helping us figure out the appropriate scope. So I think, and I see that Bethany is on the line. I don't want to speak for her. But I think there was some desire for the town to have enough time from the time that the study is conducted to essentially look at the study and if anything is found as a result of the study, that any improvements that the town would want to make, that the town would have time to do that. And so what we had proposed, which I think is a reasonable amount of time, is that we would conduct the study when we pull the building permit. And from that point forward, I think in a kind of a best-case scenario, it's about three years, three years plus before the project would be occupied. And in that timeframe, the town would certainly have an opportunity to implement any improvements that it saw fit. You know, one other just point as a practical matter that I think we would certainly do is prior, when we file the building permit application, it usually takes the town, you know, 30 days or more to review the plans and review the application for the building permit. And so we would certainly begin that dialogue with the DPW at that point in time to coordinate the study, you know, pinpoint where the locations are going to be, where we're going to install the flow meters and make sure that we're all on the same page. So that is our proposal. And, you know, we obviously haven't had a chance to discuss it beyond that point with Haley and Ward.
We have your Bethany, good evening and welcome. We have the letter that you sent to us today. And with respect to what the applicant has said, why don't you perhaps address the concerns that you have with what's being proposed?
Yes, sure. Good evening, Bethany Ordung, Haley Ward. So as the applicant had stated, or the applicant's representative, we have worked through most of the relevant details of how they're going to approach the sewer study. The one remaining thing is making sure that the town would have adequate time to get a project scoped, designed, and have the funding approved if it were to have to go to town meeting for approval and have time to construct it before this project is fully occupied. My concern with that is just that if it's a typical May town meeting schedule, you know, and they were to, even if the timing, like the timing would have to work out just perfectly for them to be able to provide a report in time for the project to be scoped and an article to be put together for town meeting in order to take advantage of this full timeline that they would have between pulling the building permit and building up to full occupancy. Even though a two-year or a three-year timeline might sound like a very long time in terms of public construction, if you only have one town meeting a year and you miss that opportunity to get your funding approval, that could set your project timeline back by a year. So I just think that there needs to be a little more, maybe not necessarily more conversation, but I think that that timeline does need to be addressed to protect the town and not have them, you know, arrive in a situation where they're rushing to get this one project complete for this one proposed development, where they have a list of, you know, areas and projects that need to be addressed throughout town.
Do you have any, do you have any suggestions upon, about how that timeline could be adjusted to better protect the town?
I think that if we could better understand if now is the right time, that we could better understand when this project would most likely be kicking off. What is a realistic timeline? Let's say we assume that the project is approved tonight, which, you know, maybe is not realistic. But if we're starting at that timeline, if we approve, if you, the board, approve the project tonight, when could they realistically pull that building permit? Would that be something that could happen in, by January or February? And then they could start that study, that sewer study, the spring? Or is that something that wouldn't realistically be able to happen until March? And if that were the case, then this timeline would be kicked down a little bit. I think that realistically, it would be advantageous for the town to have a full 24 months to be able to, from when they receive the results of the study until they need to have the construction complete. And I think that that's actually a pretty optimistic timeframe.
Counsel, do you have any suggestions at this point on how we give ourselves a little better protection, perhaps, for being able to get the necessary funding approved for this?
I think portions of this conversation are kind of beyond the scope of the zoning board process. But I think for tonight, what I'd like to understand as clearly as possible is what the area of disagreement is and what the area of agreement is. And then when we get into deliberations to discuss conditions and how to craft conditions, then we can discuss how to structure that in a way that's reflective of our consultant's recommendation and the realities of our, you know, public, you know, project funding, you know, cycle through town meeting and et cetera. And so I don't think I want to get into those details just yet. I want to hear from, you know, with respect, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to hear from both sides so that I can get as solid as an understanding as possible.
Well, what I was, what I was going to do is we have an email dated September 29th from William Park, who I believe is the applicant's engineer and who is waving to us now on Zoom. And in the app, in the in the email, the last paragraph says that "The applicant has agreed to approximately one month of sewer flow monitoring to analyze sewer capacity and is agreeable to performing the monitoring in the spring with higher groundwater elevations and capturing at least one one-inch storm event over a 24-hour period. This data would be sufficient to identify if there may be infiltration and inflow." Parenthesis, I guess it's I slash I, close parenthesis, present. "The applicant's commitment is to perform sewer pipe capacity analysis, not an I dash I study." So is that basically what you've agreed to?
Yes, correct. And, Mr. Chair, I think we're actually, I don't actually think there's any disagreement in terms of the amount of time or the amount of time that the town will in fact have in order to receive the report, review the report, and then if in fact there are any improvements that the town decides that it wants to make. We may do the analysis and it may turn out that the sewer line in that stretch is fine. Or it may turn out that there are cracks in the sewer line, that there's infiltration. The I and I stands for inflow and infiltration. And so I'm sure
Obviously, I'm not a water engineer.
And so we don't know what the study is going to indicate. It could indicate any variety of things, any of those things. All of those things will have different costs, different time horizons, different requirements in order to be addressed. The town may decide to address them. The town may decide that they're already in the works. It's very hard to know any of that at this juncture. But what we can say, what we do know, is that it will take at a minimum, you know, 24 months to construct the project. And then it's going to require some time for the project to actually lease up. And what we've estimated, kind of in a best-case scenario, that that would take is about three years to three and a half years. Typically, we're starting these projects in the spring because that results in the most optimal amount of construction time. You can certainly start a project later in the year in the fall. But then you lose time during the winter months when, you know, due to weather and also due to holidays. So your construction timeline ends up continuing, you know, still being extended. So scenario A is we start construction in the spring. We will provide the study. We can commit to have the study done and results back to the town within 90 days. The town therefore, you know, so if you go back to my three-year time horizon, the town has two and a half years, two years and nine months at that point in order to determine whether it wants to make any improvements at all. And so I think that timeframe, given that we don't know, you know, what is going to be encountered, if anything, at that point, should provide the town with a reasonable amount of time to make any improvements. I also want to just note that in terms of appropriation, and this sort of goes beyond the scope, you know, perhaps of this conversation, but the applicant, obviously, at the time that we pulled the building permit, will be making a sewer connection payment. That's going to generate for this project alone nearly half a million dollars that the town could certainly appropriate towards any improvements, should it decide to do that. Obviously, you know, the town may choose to allocate those funds elsewhere. You know, my guess is they're probably not going to take those funds and, you know, use them for the school committee. But certainly, those funds would be there. So in summary, I think we're actually very, I think we've provided the scope that Haley and Ward has asked us to provide. And we think the time that we're outlining is adequate.
Okay, very good. Bethany, anything to add or are y'all set on your end?
No, I think I would agree with Mr. Lopez's statement.
Okay, excellent. Very good. That takes care of that issue, I think. Brian, do you have enough to move forward on that issue?
I think I do. Thank you for everyone's comments and the written responses. I think that's enough for my purposes.
Okay. Moving on then. How to, how to approach this, I guess. I know we had tried with you and through no fault of you to have an informal architectural group meet with you to go over the design plans and if they had some suggestions to make the design of the building perhaps more attractive from our perspective. And I know you were initially in early September willing to do that. And we had difficulty due to travel schedules and otherwise with our informal architectural committee getting together to be able to meet with you. And when they finally did and presented some design notes, I believe, and please correct me if I'm misspeaking, that you said it was too, basically too late in the game and you weren't going to consider those. Is that a fair summary?
All the part about we would not consider them. We would consider them. We just feel and believe that at this stage, it's very difficult for us to really engage in a meaningful kind of iterative process with the group of people that the town was looking to assemble.
Well, I guess I don't understand. When you say you would consider them, have you received the design notes from the committee?
I have. I received a list of 10
Okay, I mean, we can go, we can go through them at the meeting one by one and get your responses if you want. Is there anything on there that you would, you know, voluntarily agree to undertake? And that might short-circuit the process of going through it item by item tonight?
I don't think, I mean, I have the list.
You don't have your architect with you, I know.
I don't have my architect with me. And I, I don't know that, I mean, I certainly couldn't go through the list and say, yes, we'll do this. Yes, we'll do that or no, we'll do this, you know, we won't do that. And we can go through them if the board would like.
Well, I don't want to do it if you're not in a position to really be able to respond to it. What I might suggest is we have two more meetings in the extension of time you have provided to us. And what if we take this issue up at our October 14th meeting, where you may have your architect with you if you so desire? And we'll talk about that and also start the review of the waivers and get a good move on that. How would that be?
I appreciate the, the, I guess, the commentary to try and move the process forward.
We're trying.
I do appreciate that. I just don't know how that would work. I mean, just for example, some of these comments, just to read a few. "We recommend recessing the top floor at the Waverly side to reduce visual impact. This detail looks, creates better shadow lines and doesn't make the top floor look so heavy." That's the third comment.
That's the third comment. That's actually, the, the building as designed does incorporate a step back, you know, on the third, at the top level. The white linear, the, the next comment, "The white linear lines in the recess at the Waverly entrance is disruptive. We recommend changing this to charcoal or black band board." You know, that's a very specific request to change the color of something. I suppose, you know, our architect could agree to that, but again, it's really just a stylistic preference. And, you know, where architects have taken a lot of time to come up with the scheme, it wasn't something that was just kind of arrived to. I, I, I'd be in a tough position to just kind of say, okay, well, you know what, we'll, we'll throw all the design out the window and we'll just accept this comment. And we don't even really know, you know, what the qualifications are of the group that put this list together. My understanding is that they are, you know, a group of local architects that have provided commentary, but, you know, with all due respect, I'm not sure if that is something that we and our capital partners and our ownership want to put ahead of our architectural firm who is, you know, very, very qualified. So, my, what I perhaps would like to suggest, and maybe, you know, I'll, I'll get clubbed with a two-by-four afterwards for making the suggestion, but is, we would be open to having a meeting with the architectural group prior to, you know, pulling a building permit, prior to, you know, submitting final designs and having a working session, you know, at that point and, and taking some of those, some of these considerations or suggestions under consideration.
Let me ask a question to Town Council. Once a comprehensive permit is granted with approved plans, there's no ability to legally force a change in the development? Is that correct?
Well, not through the ZBA unless there's an application for a modification, but there's a lot that happens after the permit leaves the ZBA, before a building permit is actually pulled. And I think that's what Mr. Lopez is referring to, that they're going to have to go back to the state with our decision and, and then get final approval from the state. And then what we've reviewed and what we've received are just really preliminary plans.
Okay.
They're not fully engineered, they're not, you know, designed out to the point where they're anywhere near worthy of construction drawings.
Correct.
And so I think what Mr. Lopez is saying, that between when we issue our, our decision here and they actually get to those fully engineered construction drawings, that'll be inclusive of all these considerations, that they'd be amenable to a permit condition that require them to meet and consult with the group at the very least. I'm paraphrasing.
Essentially.
Okay, thank you. That sort of clarifies that. So if we're not going to meet next time in the 14th and go over these 10 items, I think that leaves us with the question about the, the ledge and the removal of the ledge. At one point, you had indicated at an earlier meeting that you were going to investigate the cost of that, doing that. And then I believe at the next meeting, you came back and said it wasn't, it wasn't, and I'm summarizing, I'm not quoting you, it wasn't practical because it was going to require a stone wall, retaining wall, something to hold it up. And we never did get a, an estimate on what it would cost to remove the ledge. So is that something that you didn't calculate or chose not to, I guess, we're just, just trying to nail down where we are on that?
Yeah, we, we really didn't, going out and getting a, a hard cost, a cost estimate, if you will, for removing that ledge, sort of in isolation, is not, it's, it's a lot more kind of complicated, if you will, than that. I mean, the, the ledge component, it wouldn't just simply be removing the ledge, it would be removing the ledge, and then what do you do with, with, with the ledge removal? You have to construct a retaining wall. So there's, there's a whole scope of work. You know, it's not as simple as sort of pulling out this one-line item in isolation, and it just didn't make sense for us to do that in the, in the broader, you know, scheme of it.
Okay.
At, at best, so just to provide a little bit more color, just, I don't want our, my answer to seem kind of flippant. You know, we would have to do, you know, pretty extensive volumetric calculations of, you know, you'd have to survey where the ledge is in order to have any good sense of, you know, what the cost would be. And at this juncture, we, you know, without having going and poking holes everywhere and doing cores to know exactly where the ledge begins and ends, it's, you're really just taking a, an educated guess as to what the cost would be.
Okay. Brian, anything further that we need on that subject?
Specifically the, the ledge?
Yep.
No, I think we had made some inquiries on our end, just to see if our professional team had any comment that it wanted to add to the conversation, and I believe we're still waiting to hear back on that. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay, so it may come up again at the next meeting if we do receive any comment on that, so we, we may ask you a third time.
Board members, any questions on what we've talked about tonight for Mr. Lopez? Brian?
I, I got a quick one on, on the ledge thing again, because it kind of bugs me a little bit. But say it's all ledge, and you had to throw out a guess at number to remove a certain amount of footage of that to create the space needed. What do you think your guess would be on something like that?
I, I, no idea. It's too broad. Could be, it, it could be a million dollars, it could be $2 million, it could be, you know, it's something of that magnitude, which is very significant, obviously, and...
Brian, any further questions?
No.
Stu, any questions of what we discussed with Mr. Lopez this evening?
You're muted.
You're on mute.
No, sir.
Okay. And Ryan, how about you?
Ju- just one quick question relative to the architectural, I guess, for lack of a better word, committee or suggestion group. Is, is that a list that we will have posted? I haven't seen that yet, or is that something that'll be coming down the line, that we can see the recommendations on design?
And we can certainly email it to the entire board. I thought we had.
I thought we had as well.
I may have missed it if I did. My apologies, but...
Okay, we'll double-check and make sure you get it, that the entire board gets it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, nothing else on my end.
I've asked all of my questions. We'll open it up for public comment, limited to issues that we've talked about this evening. If anybody wishes to make public comment, please line up along the wall, or if you're online, raise your hand, and as always, we'll alternate one and one going forward. Yes, sir, you're usually first in line, and you didn't disappoint.
Art Johnson for Roberts Road, just one thing on the, it was really from last, last meeting, but kind of ties into the ledge thing and why sidewalks in the future would be necessary. Mr. Gomez mentioned that there were no amenities to the east. And just a point of information, the largest Hindu temple in New England is within walking distance of Waverly Street, so I'm sure some of the residents might be walking towards that way. So, in on the ledge, there's a blind driveway sign, so that's all.
Okay, thank you. And anybody online? Doesn't look like it. Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops. Oh, well, I'll be replaced shortly, I'm sure.
Did you actually think that was me? My picture?
I didn't know, but there was a hand up.
Yeah. So, well, thank you. Michael Herbert, Town Manager. Mr. Lopez, thank you for, for the discussion and being present and being willing to go through all the issues. I don't think we've had the opportunity to meet before, but, you know, one thing I was considering in, in just talking about some of the architectural discussions that we've had, and, you know, obviously appreciate the fact that it is a little bit later in the hearing process than what would be ideal, I think, an ideal situation here. But I do think the architectural aspects of the project are, are pretty important, as well as some of the other things, but I, I want to get quickly to my point, which is, as you know, I mean, one of the reasons why things, I think, feel or might feel a lot of, are kind of slow is that we do have, you know, quite a few 40B projects happening at the same time. And in addition to that, a number of development projects that are happening through the planning board and the special permit process. And so we look at the, you know, number of, of units as a total, you know, it can be a bit overwhelming. And then, you know, again, if you look at that in terms of its impact on our water and sewer issues, some of our other infrastructure issues, but, you know, that, I think that's certainly something to be considered as we're discussing all of these projects is the number of units. And that being said, if I remember correctly, this project on Waverly Street is 226 units. And if I remember correctly, there's a provision in the purchase and sale, which is basically a flat fee for the first 200 units, and I think it's an additional fee for, or a payment to the seller for any unit above 200. And just given the number of total units that we're looking at coming onboard here in Ashland over the years, I'm wondering, would you be willing to reduce your project by 26 units, which would have an impact, I think, in some of the architectural discussions that we're having?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure, I'm certainly not in a position to make any, you know, concession that will, or concession that will reduce the number of units and, you know, how that bears on the architectural, you know, aspect of the building. So, I'm also not familiar with the clause that you reference in the purchase and sale agreement. I'm not sure that I'm even aware of that, so I'm kind of curious where that information came from.
Oh, I believe I saw a copy, well, I did see a copy of the purchase and sale agreement as part of the mass housing process. As you know, when, when an application is submitted to mass housing, they have to include a number of documents, including the purchase and sale.
Yes, no, I, I, that might have been with the prior developer, that was the developer that made the application to mass housing.
Oh, okay. So is, so am I to surmise that the one that is with the current developer is different?
No, it's just that we had the mass housing project eligibility letter transferred to our company. And so the initial, whatever the initial transaction was with the prior group that had the project under a contract could have been different. So I'm, I'm not sure what the, I'm not here to discuss the terms of the purchase and sale agreement for our project in, in a public forum.
Okay, I understand, yeah. The reason I brought it up, though, is just because I believe it did have a provision in there about the number of units, and it just, I, I do think the number of units has something to bear with the architecture. I mean, I would hate to spend anybody's time and money and effort, you know, designing a building for 226 units when you would actually be willing to do 200, or 200 units, you know?
Right.
Anything further on this subject from either? Thank you, Mr. Herbert, for checking in, and thank you, Mr. Lopez, for answering.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything else for us to conduct. Oh, I'm sorry. You're another regular that speaks at these hearings, so I apologize.
Paul Flaherty, the owner of 63 Waverly Street budding this project, doing a walkthrough of the, the, I, I think everyone realizes that the, the, where the ledge, the town's asking for the ledge to be cut back is a very, probably the worst corner, certainly along the whole length of Route 135. There's very, very little sightline to where the entrance and exit to the project is going to be. And it looks, it, not being a professional, but it certainly looks to me like there's a fairly small amount of ledge that would have to be removed in order to just open up the sightline and provide some space if a sidewalk ever did go in, in the future. I think it would make a very big difference on the safety of that curve as it comes right into the main entry-exit of this project. So I think it's something that the town should really try to get done.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms.? I was just going to say, I don't think there's anything for us to talk about further tonight that we're ready to talk about. We have a meeting on October 14th. We'll start with your waiver requests. Anything else that comes up in between the, this meeting and that meeting will also be added. I just want to make sure we have your final waiver requests. I have something back in June, and if that's the final waiver request that you're seeking, fine. If not, please update them and get them to us well in advance of the October 14th meeting so they can be disseminated to the board members and council, and we can get working on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on, on the waiver discussion that we're planning for the next hearing. If you can provide any guidance in terms of, so that we could prepare for that, is it the board's, I don't know if it's the board's intention or typical practice to go through every single waiver or certain waivers? Any guidance on that front would be helpful, just so we can kind of prepare.
Certainly, and I'll be guided by our council.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman and Board, so assuming that the board defers to my guidance on this at the next meeting, I like to, you know, go down the, the site-specific ones individually and discuss them. Some of them are not going to be really worthy of much discussion, right? And so some of those, I think we can breeze through fairly quickly. But ones, and I haven't refreshed my memory on the list, so I'm, I'm just speaking in the abstract here, but, you know, ones that may require some specific sort of assessment of how far the board wants to go to make it an appropriate waiver, if they want to grant it at all, and we'd probably have some discussion on those itemized, one by one. But on the more sort of generic, you know, ones, if you will, less so. And what I usually do for the board is create kind of a matrix of, here's, here's the provision that is under discussion, here's the ask, and then the last column would be the board's decision on that. You know, and just to give you an example, like if it's a height waiver, you know, we're not going to give a blanket height waiver, right? So you can go up 300 feet. You know, it would be something site-specific, and it might say waiver to 26 feet plus or minus a foot. And so we would just go through those, those ones that have more sort of metrics associated with them and dial down on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, that's very helpful. I believe the board does have our most, our, our current waiver request. I will, I will... I will triple-check it between now and the next hearing. And if there's anything that needs to be updated, we'll resubmit that.
Lot of documents since then, so if you could just send a copy to all board members so that they have them in front of it and also a copy to Ryan, so he has it front and center as well. Brian? Okay, that being said, motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, October 14th at 7:05 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. The meeting, the hearing is continued until Tuesday, October 14th. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have three hearing decisions to review and approve from matters that were voted upon at our last meeting. Taking them in order on the agenda, the first one is a special permit application involving 17 Central Street. On that matter, I voted, Brian voted, and Stu Siegel voted. Again, 17 Central Street. Anybody have any questions about the draft hearing decision that was prepared by Jasmine and submitted for our consideration?
Mr. Chairman, I have some suggestions.
Please, Stu, go ahead.
Under facts and evidence, paragraph, the last paragraph, for the last two paragraphs. These are somewhat nitpicking, but they should be correct. The sentence reads, "At the public hearing on September 9th, 2025, I think a comma should be inserted after 2025."
Okay. Does anybody have any, Brian, any objection to that?
Fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, and then, so then the sentence would read, "The applicant of 17 Central Street explained to the board their petition for," and I think, "an A special permit, insert A special permit, "to build, insert both a garage and bedroom over the existing dwelling line while staying within the same, insert, building footprint." So if you want me to repeat those suggested changes, I will.
Jasmine, do you have those?
I have those, thank you.
Anybody, Brian, or any?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, I'm fine with them.
Good eye, Stu.
Then continuing on, "the board, insert, "then opened and subsequently closed "the public session after no public comments were received "and then entered into deliberation." So I can reread that for Jasmine.
Yeah, you lost me there.
I, that's, it's recorded on the record. So we'll be able to review that through the minutes or the recording.
Okay.
Or you can call me tomorrow.
Okay, we're all set.
And then, under findings by the board?
Yep.
The next section. The board, after reviewing and deliberating, I think the word "of" should be taken out. Doesn't need to be there.
Okay.
Continuing on, it says, "The facts, plans, and materials presented at this hearing, comma, insert comma, "made the following findings." So inserting the comma after hearings. That's all I had.
Okay, I have no problems with any of those. Brian?
Sounds good.
Okay. And is there a motion to approve the hearing decision with the amendments Stu gave us?
So moved.
And is, I will second that. And aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of the decision.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Moving on to the next one, which is a, I'm actually not sure which one is next. But moving on to the special permit application for 24 Pinecrest Lane. There was a slight change in the, on the first page of the draft that was submitted to us. We changed the naming of the petitioner so that Murphy is the name of both Dan and Sasha. And Katz was Sasha's former last name. And she was the property owner. And we also changed the mistake that had been made in the second line identifying the address. It was 24 Pinecrest Lane and not 17 Central Street, which obviously had been carried over from a previous draft. Any changes or proposed questions about that? Sitting on this matter, again, with Brian and Stu? Brian, do you have any?
Not me.
I'm sorry, Stu?
It wasn't me, I think it was Ryan.
Just checking to see who's listed as on the decision. I may have written it down by mistake. No, you're listed as the signing member, Stu.
Oh, for both of them? Okay.
For both of those. We have a third one, and Ryan is the signatory on that one. And I think actually on the agenda items, one may be out of order, that's all. But you're the signatory on the 24 Pinecrest Lane special permit.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of approving the decision.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Okay, excellent. Moving on to the third and final decision. And that was a variance request involving 30 Memorial Drive. Sitting on this matter was Brian, myself, and Ryan. Any proposed changes or questions anyone has about the draft?
None.
None.
None, I'm not set with it. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of approving the decision to grant the variance at 30 Memorial Drive.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll approve.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, approve.
Excellent. Now, we have to sign, two of us are present and we can sign. And Brian, Ryan and Stu, you'll make arrangements, as always, to come in and sign the, sign the signatory page so that they can be filed with the town clerk. Moving on to approval of the minutes for our September 9th, 2025 meeting, Jasmine sent the draft of these. Did you receive any comments from anyone with proposed changes?
I did not.
Anybody have any questions or proposed changes on the draft minutes before we take a vote to approve?
I don't have any.
Stu and Ryan, you okay?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Excellent, okay. A motion then to approve the minutes of September 9th, 2025, as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Excellent, that concludes that. Moving on to any updates or staff issues that we need to know about?
Only that we still have our associate member position open if anybody's interested. And we are open until 7 PM tomorrow. Stu and Ryan, if that works for either of you to come in and sign the decision then.
Say that again, please.
We're open until 7 PM tomorrow if either of you are available to come in and sign the decisions then.
I maybe, I do have one affidavit from the April 22nd meeting that I do need to sign. I don't know if that's there in the file that I can sign at the same time, but.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
I believe that concludes everything on our agenda for this evening. Does anybody have anything else? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Thank you all, everybody, thank you very much. Thank you, whacka.